Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, November 13, 2017. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could have you please rise. The pledge allegiance will be led by Arrow of Light Den Cub Scout PAC 469. And please remain standing for the invocation by Father Tom Jones, Church of the Holy Spirit, 1305 Thomas Drive. All yours.
If you are in uniform, please salute. If you have a hat, please take it off and put it over your head. That part's optional, actually. Now join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands today, one nation, united in its own, with liberty and justice for all. That's it.
Thank you. PAC 469.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Guide us to make wise decisions in the work before us, that the decisions we make are made with right intentions and the best interest of those we serve, and with a mind towards proper stewardship of the resources we have been entrusted with. Give our city council discerning hearts, as they listen to those who may offer witness to the issues at hand, and enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is much more important than our differences, so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey, and those who depend on us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless those gathered in this place, that all may know your love and grace, and knowing it, we might embrace it, share it, and let it be what leads us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father Tom Jones. Second item on the agenda, the roll call, please.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted on the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes, and advisory committee reports.
Subitem A is the approval of the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda. Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon?
Mayor, I would move that we remove item 9B from the agenda. Item 9B is a violation of City Council Policy 17. Any attempt to abolish a standing committee must be submitted by the mayor, and must be accompanied by a written report explaining why that committee has to be abolished. If you guys want to see it, I brought copies.
Mr. Sullivan.
Councilman Shannon just showed me the policy. I think, as far as, that's just one portion of the ordinance. It has to go through three readings. We can certainly amend it at any time. It's your choice whether you want to have that removed, but it's, that ordinance could simply be passed with an amend, if, in fact, there's no other solution, that ordinance could be passed with an amendment deleting that section, if necessary. So, it's, it's, the city council's call whether they want to remove it, but we adjust ordinances all the time as we move along through the three readings.
But as submitted, it is improper and in violation of that, so I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Modri. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Pat, or Mr. Sullivan, if I'm understanding right, is that we would remove it from the agenda tonight, because what we were shown today, our policy resolution number 17, is stating that the request must be made by the mayor or a council member? That's what?
I, I think that's what the request is. My understanding is that is just one provision of the ordinance in general. Also, what I need to look at, we waive council policy sometimes, so we could, there's potential that that could be passed with a waiver of council policy as well.
I.
But, for instance, sometimes, and I believe even on our agenda, we waive our normal bidding processes, so I want to take a look at that policy as well as this, and to see whether they, there's any prohibition of that.
I guess part of my concern is, is that, being on the agenda, can the assumption be made as being brought forward by the mayor, at the request of the mayor? Or, could the mayor simply, by our next meeting, simply give us something in writing that she's making this recommendation?
The, the mayor or any city council person can do that, yes. Again, we won't be, if you guys were going to waive three readings and vote tonight, I tell you, don't, don't do that. But we've still got two more readings.
That's what I'm sort of getting at, is why not proceed with it? It's another, you know, it's going to be another month before we vote on the third, at the third reading, so let's just give the mayor or a council member the opportunity to present a request of what we're trying to do.
And, and I just need to take a look at, at it. It's just presented to me a few minutes before the meeting, but I, I don't see any problem with it moving forward, but at the same token, if you guys want to remove it, you can remove it, so.
I see it as a slap in the face to the cemetery committee, volunteer civilians that have dedicated 13 years of their life, they spend their own money, they spend their own resources, they spend their own time, and they've served the city faithfully, and to just abolish them and do away with them because the city administrator doesn't agree with their call on something, I, I think that's unconscionable. So, I want this removed, and I want the mayor to bring it back if she thinks it's appropriate.
We don't know how anybody's going to vote at the third reading, so you're making the assumption it would be abolished.
But it's a violation, as presented tonight, it's a violation of council policy.
Mr. Manjimelli.
The ordinance will not abolish the cemetery committee. As a matter of fact, the ordinance provides that a cemetery committee could be created as we move through the process of passing the ordinance. So there isn't any slap in the face, it's an opportunity to hear all sides, and I would ask that we move forward as, as proposed. The cemetery committee, as they exist, the two citizens serving on the current city cemetery committee have been provided with the information, and we've invited their comments at the next meeting as part of the public hearing.
Mr., Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. We have mentioned of receiving some new cemetery rules, Mr. Manjimelli. Is that going to be presented then by the next meeting along with the public hearing? Or is that, I mean, it seems part and parcel, but it's not included. I'm wondering when that will come forward.
The city attorney's office is working with staff on the rules, and they will be, become part of the public hearing process at the next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
Just a clarification, in Section 21-37 of the proposed ordinance, it states all cemetery rules and regulations adopted by the city council are hereby abolished on January 1st. Any cemetery committee or association created pursuant to any prior ordinance, resolution, or other process approved by an affirmative vote of the city council is hereby disbanded as of January 1st. So, it is being abolished.
Any new committee could be put in place in lieu thereof.
Where you can stack it with people that are favorable to your opinion.
It would, it would be members of the, of the community that the mayor would recommend to the council, and the council would have an opportunity to vet them and determine if they're appropriate for service on the committee.
Thereby validating exactly what I've said. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should leave it there. This is just the first reading. Actually, the next meeting would be a hearing where everybody will get their opportunity to speak for or against the committee, or how they work, or whatever, and like Mr. Cook said, it'll be to the third reading, of which this council would vote on it. But I think right now, we're just having the discussion that really should take place in the next meeting, two weeks from now. So I, I would, I would assume to just keep it on there, whether you think it's illegal or not, we can, our attorneys can be checking that out as we go, Pat, you know, and go from there. But I mean, it just seems like that would be the, the smart thing to do, so.
So currently, we have a motion on the, on the floor and a second? To remove, Mr. Sullivan, should we, go ahead? Can I call the vote? Please vote.
The vote is two to four. Motion fails.
Thank you. So it's.
I have another item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Shannon.
As we prepared for this meeting, I submitted four items for addition to the agenda of this meeting. When I contacted the city clerk to find out why none of the items I submitted for this meeting were included in the agenda, I'm told that Mr. Manjimelli has put a policy in place that she doesn't add things to the city council agenda if an elected official asks for them to be added to the agenda unless he approves them. So, this city council does not work for your city administrator, all right? I want that policy revoked. I want to be able to add things to the agenda of my own meeting. I'm the elected official, I represent the people, and I'm being interfered with in the performance of my duties.
Mr. Manjimelli.
Mr. Shannon, in response to your request, I sent you today a copy of City Code Section 2 dash 29 that specifies when and how items are to be provided for the agenda. I provided you with explanation on each one of the five items that you requested be on the agenda.
All right, I don't know when that email came out, but the policy can't stand.
First thing this morning.
We're not going to have a city administrator interfering with elected officials.
Then you, you can introduce an ordinance to repeal the current ordinance as it, as it exists.
The current ordinance does not allow you to block city council members from putting something on the agenda.
The ordinance provides for the mechanism and the timely, timelines for submission of council documents. 2 dash 29, I, we have a book right here, I can show you.
We're all familiar with, okay? And we're also familiar with the fact that the agenda is set on Wednesday and is published, all right? So, I submitted things within that timeframe. Nobody's followed 2 dash 29 in years.
Your, your request came in on Thursday, and none of those requ, sir, if you'd let me speak.
City clerk can clarify.
It came in on Thursday.
Came in on Thursday. None of those items were of an emergency nature, so in accordance with the current ordinance, they are not added to the agenda.
But it's not your call, sir.
If you want to read Section 2 dash 29, it is.
Mr., Mr. Sullivan, you have an opinion?
No, if they're done speaking, let's vote.
We did, there wasn't a motion, and it was, there was no second.
We have a motion on the agenda.
On the agenda, but you, you asked for others, okay. So we have the approval of the agenda. We have a motion and a second? Please vote.
We're voting for the agenda as written.
Yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Subitem B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests, in which case it will be removed from the consent agenda and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Subitem 1 is the approval of minutes of the October 23, 2017, meeting of the city council. Item 2, acknowledgement of the receipt of the revised minutes of the October 19, 2017, meeting of the planning commission. Those revised minutes are on the table in front of you. Item 3, approval of claims. Item 4, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. Item 5, authorizing the cancellation of the December 25, 2017, meeting of the city council and authorizing staff to pay bills that cannot be held over until the January 8, 2000 city council, 2018 city council meeting. Item 6, approving the appointment of Barbara Bolter as a member of the firefighters retirement committee. Item 7, approval of a five-year contract with Century Link for our prime rate service. And item 8, approval of the agreement with Lockton for the 2018 employee wellness program. Mayor, members of the city council, are any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Shannon?
Two items, Mayor. Under claims, there's a claim under building maintenance for Trico Mechanical Services for $5,915.81, and I would ask that we remove the planning commission minutes from the consent agenda as well. Mr. Cook.
Let me clarify, you want to move to regular agenda one of the claims?
Yes.
Then just remove the claims from the consent.
All right, then I move to remove the claims. All right. You have something?
Are there others? Mr., Mr. Preister.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the two items removed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 4 then is approval of claims.
Mr. Shannon.
On our agenda tonight, we have the planning commission minutes. We don't have the revised minutes, so I've pulled this so that we can amend this to approve the revised minutes. So, I would move this time.
I stated, I stated the revised minutes, and I said they're on your table.
I know you stated it, but it's not on our agenda. It has to be on the agenda. The city attorney told me to pull it. So, I am making a motion to approve the revised minutes of the planning commission meeting.
Second.
We have a second. Modri. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shuchak.
You're not approving the minutes of the planning commission, your knowledge receipt.
We need to re, put that in the motion, Mr. Shuchak? You've got it, Sabrina? Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 4, approval of claims. Mr. Shannon?
I would move that we approve the claims.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon?
Under building maintenance, there's a bill from Trico Mechanical Services to replace an air conditioning compressor in this building for $5,915. I have two problems with that. One, a brand-new air conditioner is only $6,600, and two, we're not going to be in this building come spring to need air conditioning, so I don't understand why we're throwing $6,000 out on an air conditioning repair in this building when we're leaving in two months. Mr. Roberts?
Well, it wasn't my first choice to do this, and probably 99 out of 100 times, I wouldn't have done it, but in this case, we were in that Indian summer. There was extended forecast continuing to show 90-degree days. This council chamber was running 90 degrees during those days. The offices upstairs were also approaching 90 degrees, so that was the reason that we went ahead and got the air fixed, just for the safety of the, of the employees.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Are there any discussion or questions? Mr. Cook, did you, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 5, special presentation, 5A.
Subitem A is Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation, third, third quarter update.
Andrew, give us just one second.
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, Andrew Rainbow, Executive Director of Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation, and this is our, I stated our third quarter report for the Sarpy County EDC. We're passing out two, two documents to this time. One is our, our third quarter economic indicators that we track, and the other is our, our goal sheet, our progress report, as we refer to it. I'll start, I think almost everybody has it here, but I'll, I'll get started on our economic indicators, starting with net taxable sales. Almost everyone in the county was up this, this quarter as compared to last quarter. Again, these are net taxable sales, so it's a, a self-reported measure of, of sales that are taxable but not necessarily taxed here at the point, at the point of production. And so this is a number that we get from the Nebraska Department of Revenue. Bellevue showed a slight increase over last year for the second quarter. These numbers are always a quarter behind, I'm sorry, I should have said that, but we had about $113 million in net taxable sales as compared to 111 at this time last year. Year-to-date, we're fairly even with where we were last year, so a, a little bit of growth there. On the building permit valuations, Bellevue saw a, a slight drop from last year for this quarter, third quarter of 2017 compared to third quarter of 2016, but year-to-date, we are up about $60 million in, in building permit valuations. Across the county, you can see Papillion's had a large increase as compared, well, that'd be year-to-date, they have, they've had a, a large increase. La Vista had a large increase this quarter. That was due chiefly to a, a senior living facility that was permitted at that point. Moving down to single-family housing subdivisions platted, Bellevue had one large development platted this quarter for 176 lots. This is one of the, the, the highest numbers of platted lots we've had for any quarter that I can remember. We've had 1,202 lots platted just in the third quarter of 2017 alone, and we're well over 2,000 for, for the year, so it's, we've, over the last several years, we've had more houses permitted than lots platted, so it makes sense, as the growth continues, that we need to catch up on some of those platted lots. Looking at single-family housing permits issued, Bellevue had 30, 41, I'm sorry, 41 in the third quarter of 2017, a little higher than this quarter last year. Year-to-date, we're up about 20 houses. On the multifamily housing permits issued, you can see, we didn't really have any, very many across the county. We had one development in La Vista and a small one in Papillion, but year-to-date, Bellevue is up about 150 units compared to last year. The last one I'll point out is our Sarpy County Labor Force statistics. Our labor, our unemployment rate really hasn't changed too much. We hover a little bit below 3% most of the time. The number I'll point out is that in July, we, we were almost, we were about 15 people away from having 94,000 workers in our labor force. That would be, to my knowledge, a high point for us. We did drop back down in August. We typically peak in the summertime with some of the extra summer employment, but that's a huge number for us. We, we need to continue to increase that number. We've kind of fluctuated between 89 and 91,000 workers, and we need to, we need to keep growing that number, so that's a, a plus for us, and hopefully we continue to see that number grow. I'll move on quickly to our, our goal sheet here, the, the other sheet I handed you. This is how we track our progress at Sarpy County EDC, starting at the top with landed projects. We did land one project in the, in the third quarter, a data center that was purchased in Papillion that we had worked with. Year-to-date, we've landed three projects. This relatively slow year for us from a project number. At this point last year, we had six projects landed. We do have a few more that will land before the end of the year, but on the capital investment side, obviously, our big project this year was Facebook, and so we've got a, a little over a billion dollars in capital investment that we've counted through the, just those three projects that we've landed. A little low on the employment side as well, so 110 total jobs with those three projects, and there was 10 in the project that we landed this quarter. Our pipeline has been pretty strong, really. We've had 31 new-to-market opportunities, or 31 market, I'm sorry, 31 opportunities that we've opened this year. 28 of those have been new-to-market. Three of those have been retention projects, working with existing employers here in the county to expand and keep them in Sarpy County. So, our, our year started out really fast, and then we kind of had a lull in the middle of the year, and now it's actually picking back up. It's opposite of what we usually have, so a, a little different for us, but nonetheless, we're, we're seeing a strong end to the year in this fourth quarter so far. We've had nine prospect visits year-to-date. We just had one in the third quarter. Again, that's a good number for us, but the third quarter's usually when we see a lot of, of visits, and we've already seen more than that in the fourth quarter, so kind of a, a different pattern to this year for us. We've, we've completed 40 existing business visits so far through the third quarter. Our goal is 75. With the loss of our business development person, James Caraway, this year, I'm not sure we're going to hit that 75, but we'll certainly spend a lot of the time in the fourth quarter here, making some of those, we call them BRE, Business Retention Expansion visits. Our projects, the, the types of projects that we've been working on, on the new-to-market ones, we've had a couple of different oddball projects that we just put in other. One sports and entertainment project, but you can see the bulk of our time is spent on warehouse distribution projects. We've had eight of those. Nine office service projects, which also include the data centers, and eight manufacturing projects. So that's very typical for us. And on the retention expansion projects, we've had one office that we, office project that we've worked with here, and, and two manufacturing projects as well. To finish up, I'll just give you a quick update on some of the things that we're working on right now. We have our, our site due diligence underway on the city of Bellevue's property south of, of, of Offutt Air Force Base, so we've had folks out in the field here the last few weeks. They should be finishing that up and getting their reports to us soon, and then we'll, from there, we'll take that to create a, a marketing packet that we'll put together to try to get that site certified through the Greater Omaha Economic Development Partnerships Site Certification Program. I mentioned we lost James Caraway earlier this year, our business development representative. I've just actually posted that position here, so hopefully we'll have a new person in that place by the beginning of the year, and, and get them off and running for 2018. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Andrew Rainbow? See none, thanks for all of your work, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B is a presentation and request for approval of the annual renewal of the city employee medical, dental, vision, legal, life, and disability insurance for 2018.
Every year about this time, we come before you and we ask you to approve the employee health care insurance plans. Over the last several years, there've been some increases that we've enjoyed with many others across the country, the insurers, either due to high cost of medical care, or the uncertainty over the health care laws that may or may not change. This year, we have some good news, and since the broker's here behind me, I guess I can't take credit for that 0% increase, so I'll just let him explain it to you a little bit, and then he'll answer any of your questions.
First of all, I think I need a step stool standing next to you.
You can lower that mic a little bit, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We're very fortunate this year to have a very good increase, especially with what's going on with affordable health care, and we're looking at, as, as Rich said, a zero increase, not only just for the health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but also for all of our ancillary coverages, the disability, the life, the dental, also has a zero increase. So, we, I, I know Janie had already walked out, but I want to thank Janie for all of her hard work in this wellness plan that, and I want to thank the, the members of the council for updating and renewing the wellness plan that we have. It's, it is helping people who weren't aware of some health issues that they might have had, and it's being proactive, and that's what we need to do, especially with health care today. care today, to try to keep these big costs from coming. We still had six, seven claims that were equivalent to about $850,000. So that's why we have insurance in place for the catastrophic scenario. Again, we have a really good showing in our wellness plan. And so 18 will be a great year for us with a zero increase. We did have a chance to meet with the employees and the unions, and they were very happy. They're very appreciative of being able to stay with Blue Cross. Blue Cross has been a good carrier, a good partner to the city of Bellevue. And hopefully we'll have great news again for the 2019 renewal. Any questions?
Mr. Hanson.
Is the coverage the same? Deductibles the same?
Yes, sir.
Premiums are zero?
Premiums increased, same plan, design, same everything. No changes in coverage or anything.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that's cause for celebration, too. When you can renew a health care policy these days, in these times, and have no increase, it does speak to the wellness program. Early detection, early screening, and then reducing some of those later costs, because you bury your head, you don't want to know what's going on, and then it advances to such an advanced stage that you have to pay exorbitant hospital and medical costs.
Right.
So we have, I think, been good stewards of the taxpayers' money in providing some incentives now for the health and the well-being of our employees in the wellness program. So, but I think this is cause to celebrate for the taxpayers that we don't have an increase. So I'm grateful.
Very much so, because the majority of the business out there, both private and public sectors, are in the double digits. So we're very fortunate, we're doing a great job, and we're moving in the right direction.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none, this is the next item. Mr. Hanson.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and have the annual renewal for the, all the insurance, medical, dentist, everything.
Second, Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Severson. Item six, liquor license, none. Seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Item A is ordinance number 3887, rezoning Lot 1, Southeast Plaza, from BH, excuse me, BGH to ML for the purpose of light industrial. I'll read the title of the ordinance. It's an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 909 Fort Crook Road North, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date. And then subitem B is Resolution Number 2017-22, request approval of the redevelopment project plan for Lot 1, Southeast Plaza. Applicant is Marathon Equity LLC, location 909 Fort Crook Road North.
Yes, sir. Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 3887.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 2017-22.
Second, my Mr. Cook. Discussion, questions? See none. Mr. Shannon.
Do we know what percentage we're at for percentage of the city that's blighted in substandard and percentage that's received TIF? I mean, we do have statutory limits. Where are we at on those limits?
Mr. Shuk.
We are, I can say, below 15%. I found these numbers for Larry Burks and Joe Manjimelli fairly recently when we were talking about the area south of the base. We're nowhere close to the 35% statutory limit.
Any other questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, none. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading.
Item A is ordinance number 3888. I'll read the title, an ordinance to amend Sections 5.24, 5.27, and 5.28. Ordinance Number 3619, Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, relating to outdoor storage in the BGH, Heavy General Business Zoning District, ML, Light Manufacturing Zoning District, and MH, Heavy Manufacturing Zoning District. To repeal such action as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. This ordinance will have a public hearing on November 27. Item B is ordinance number 3889, an ordinance to add new Article 2 Bellevue Cemetery Sections 21-31 to 21-37 to the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the operation, maintenance, and rules and regulations of the Bellevue Cemetery, to repeal all ordinances in effect, excuse me, in conflict herewith as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance. Again, this will have public hearing on November 27. Item C is ordinance number 3890, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Highway Allocation Fund Pledge and Refunding Bond Series 2017 of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed $4 million. A, for the purpose of paying the costs of certain street improvements and related improvements within the city, and B, to provide for the payment and redemption of certain outstanding highway allocation fund pledge bonds of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued, and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, pledging funds to be received by the city from the state of Nebraska, highway allocation fund for the payment of said bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay the interest on and principle of such bonds if necessary, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and related matters. The city staff has recommended or requested that the statutory rule requiring three different days be, reading of this ordinance on three different days be suspended and a vote be taken after a public hearing this evening.
Mr. Cook.
Do you, Mayor? I'll make a motion that, that we, on the three different, on the reading on three different days be suspended, and the vote be taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Was there someone? I'll keep the public hearing open.
My name is Phil Lorenzen. I'm Vice President, representing DA Davidson and Company. We, along with Mike Rogers with Gilmore &amp; Bell, and Rich, your Finance Director, are responsible for these ordinances. I'm here to answer any questions and make any presentation you wish relative to the items. As a point of introduction, I might indicate that we have, in our role as underwriter for the city, have carefully reviewed the history of the city. We've looked at its financial circumstances. We're very pleased with the leadership that you, Madam Mayor, and the council have shown. The leadership and the work of the staff is outstanding. Your valuation of the city is currently at $2.8 billion. That represents about 21% of all the valuation of Sarpy County. Your indebtedness is around $40 million to $50 million, depending on what we do tonight. That puts you in a ratio of about 1.5%, which is very low. Tax base is stable. Tax levy is stable. Staff has looked critically at this with the help of Rich and Jeff and Mr. Manjimelli. And our recommendation is that you would proceed with these items. There are three separate ordinances on the basis, there are three statutory references that are used for this financing. That's why the three ordinances. With that, I'll stop, and I'll field any questions you might have.
Mr. Hanson.
I assume the reason to waive the three meetings is because of the fluctuation in interest rates and the possibility things could go up right now versus you fixing in a certain cost for these bonds?
There are two or three reasons, is a good question. Number one, there's a statutory limit under the federal regulations, the tax code, that allows a city to issue not more than $10 million a year in what we call bank-qualified bonds. There are bonds that can be purchased by a commercial bank, and the interest allowed for the cost of carry is deductible for the bank, so it's to a tax advantage to the banks to do that. You've issued just over $2 million in bonds so far this year. That allows you $8 million of latitude to issue more bonds and capture a lower rate by being bank-qualified. The second item is that, yes, there's fluctuation in the market. We have tax bills that we're discussing. There's a variety of items happening. The Fed is talking about increases in rates, so we have a known quantity now. It seems logical to move forward in a methodical method to go ahead and do this financing.
Mr. Modri.
Yes. The current bonds that we have range from 3.35% to 4.05%. Do we know what we're looking at for some of the refinancing?
We're estimating on the refunding transaction that all of the bonds would be issued somewhere in the upper 2% range, around two and three quarters to 2.8%. We've put a cap in the resolutions of the ordinances, rather, that allows exceeding that. It'll be up to staff and ourselves to go ahead and judge the market, get marketed as quickly as we can to settle the issue before the end of fiscal year two, calendar year, rather, 2017, to take advantage of the bank qualification. So we need some latitude on that. We would move forward promptly with that, but that's the anticipated rate. There are different rates on the different issues. The lowest is the shortest term, which is about a 1.8%.
Yeah, and then going up to?
That's correct. They're typically serial maturities and so forth, and we'll do a broad marketing to capture the lowest possible rate on those and lock that in as soon as we can.
Okay, all right. And then with that, I don't know, maybe Mr. Severson knows what that could save us down the road in payments?
He does, I do.
Oh, do you?
I will introduce Mike Rogers. If he has any comments.
Rich, economic benefit analysis?
The simple arithmetic is basically on the piece of the bond financing transaction that represents the refunding of the highway allocation bonds. The savings is about $60,000 in benefit. On the public safety, it's about $90,000 in benefit for about $150,000 total benefit, economic benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Now, on a present value basis, if you, that savings doesn't happen all today, it's spread over the course of time. If you look at the present value and make that calculation of the revenue stream, it's about, it's about $20,000, about $10,000 less than that, around $150,000 in economic value. Rich?
Mr. Hanson.
Well, in that case, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3890.
I think the public hearing was still open. Are there others that would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hanson.
I'll go ahead and repeat that. On ordinance, we make the approval of ordinance 3890.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item D is ordinance number 3891, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of public safety department tax anticipation refunding bond series 2017 of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed $2,030,000, to A, provide for the payment and redemption of certain public safety department tax anticipation bonds of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay the interest on and principle of such bonds, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and related matters.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that the statutory rule requiring reading of three different days be suspended and the vote taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I just have a question. These interest rates are also pretty low, so I assume the new interest rate will be similar to the previous one at roughly 2%? Is that?
That is correct. Let me give you a more specific statistic if I can.
I didn't think we could get that low a rate still, but it sure does sound good.
Well, they're fairly short-term. The rate on the old bonds is an average coupon rate of 3.94%. Our projection of the interest rate on the new bonds would be somewhere around the level of 1.8%, which results in a reduction of approximately 2%. Again, the economic benefit of that is somewhere around $100,000.
And these bonds, I assume, like the other bonds, will be sold to a bank or a financial institution rather than on the market?
There will be a wide distribution. There will be a priority given to banks within the community and the county. We look at the, there's an additional advantage for locals to buy the bonds. Individuals will be afforded a chance to buy the bonds, but it will be banks, individuals, potentially trust departments, and other just off-the-street investors. There'll be a broad, broad marketing in the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote. We did have a motion in a second.
You have to close the public hearing.
We've already closed it.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance number 3891.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item E is ordinance number 3892, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction with BOKF, National Association, or other such bank or trust company as may be determined, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the costs to acquire renovations and associated furnishings and equipment for city hall and the city's swimming pools and related facilities and equipment for use by the city, approving the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $5 million principal amount of certificates of participation in such lease, fixing in part and providing for the fixing in part of certain provisions of the lease and related documents and related matters.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended and the vote taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
The vote is five to one.
Thank you. Now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time.
Speaking in favor of the motion, my view would be that the city has used good discretion and wise judgment in terms of advancing monies from cash on hand to go ahead and do improvements for the swimming pool, city hall, and other related improvements. That utilized funds that were invested at very, very low interest rates to go ahead and do through reimbursement resolutions, the financing on a temporary basis through the funds on hand from the city. It's now appropriate to go and replenish those funds in order to give you flexibility to use the same technique in future financing. The lease purchase is the best approach to do that transaction. It sounds more confusing than it is, but I would invite Mike Rogers with Gilmore &amp; Bell as bond counsel to go ahead and maybe outline just quickly what the circumstances are relative to the lease purchase process and so forth. It's a healthy transaction. Again, it replenishes funds that have been advanced, allows those funds to be used for other projects, and that's a cost savings to the city in terms of issuance costs and in terms of legal cost in the process. Mike, if you want to make some comments?
Thanks, Phil. Mike Rogers with Gilmore &amp; Bell Bond Counsel. This financing utilizes the city's ability to lease purchase property, which has been used frequently over the years, typically, at least historically, in connection with the municipal building corporation. This transaction is similar to that. It relies on the same statutory authority, it's just a slightly different financing structure using a certificates of participation through a trust established rather than through the building corporation. Otherwise, it's effectively the same statutory power, but is a little more streamlined. So... So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Shannon?
Usually, as soon as you hear that we're at lease, you're talking about higher interest rates. What kind of rates are we talking about?
I'll leave that to Phil.
Again, somewhere in the 3% range is the projection. It's five, 10 basis points above what the general obligation might be. In terms of quality of the credit worthiness of the obligations, the most secure is that of the highway allocation. That's an unlimited tax. In terms of the public safety, that is payable from your five cent allowable levy under statutory section 18-1201 and 1202. That would become second place in terms of quality. The third place would be the lease purchase because it has that connotation, Mr. Shannon, as you indicate. But it's not negative, it's very positive. The cash flows of the city are very strong. Again, you're so very well managed and so forth, there should be a ready market. In order to priority, we will do the highest quality first and drop down the line. That will allow, afford us to capture the lowest possible rate. We may have to give up a little bit on the lease purchase, but we don't think it's significant.
And a question for Rich? What's significant about this transaction is the structure, where we're not going under the corporation. We're going under a trust, okay? Can you explain that a little bit so we all understand what we're talking about?
We did this, I believe it was the same type of transaction for the convention center bonds. Is that right? Similar?
It's similar. The convention center used the building corporation. The difference here is that instead of having the building corporation in the middle of the transaction, where you would also need a trust, you'd need to have a trust department under a trust indenture. Here, you have a declaration of trust, which creates a trust estate. That trust estate then sells certificates of participation in the lessor's interest in the lease transaction. This is maybe too much detail than you're wanting, but it removes the municipal building corporation from the financing. The legal fundamentals remain the same, but ultimately, then, you would have one less entity to keep alive. And also importantly, from my standpoint, as a tax lawyer as well, it is much cleaner to do a certificates of participation transaction under current tax code. The municipal building corporation operates under 1964 revenue procedure, and so it's rooted in the 1955 code, and of course, we're operating under 1986 code. So, it's...there are more pitfalls under the building corporation structure than there are under this structure, at least from a tax standpoint.
Okay. Does it change our booking liabilities or how we carry things or...
No, no. It sounded less risky, and bond counsel convinced me that this was the right way to go and there would not be a cost, as far as interest.
Do we have a separate set of books for the municipal corporation to know how much we have left on that side?
No, it's part and parcel to the City of Bellevue.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Essentially, what we're doing, we were good stewards, thanks to you, our finance director, Mr. Severson. We upfronted this money. We paid for the swimming pools. We paid this money, and now essentially, we're bonding later to refund that money to our reserve. Is that accurate?
Yes. I didn't think it was a good use of our funds to have cash in the bank at low rates and then pay interest on bonds while we were working on the project. The city, not me, has done a very good job of, over the last couple of years, of being somewhat fiscally conservative, and we have been able to save money when it was available. And those cash reserves have built to a comfortable level. And so now, when we do a paving job or we have to renovate something, we can pay the vendors out of our current cash and then come back and ask you, when the timing is right, to issue bonds to reimburse ourselves. And we're only going to take enough of the bond issues in order to sufficiently capitalize ourselves, reimburse ourselves so that we're comfortable that we are not going to have cash flow problems. And I kind of thought you were going to ask this question. Where does that put us? In the total loan picture, well, we had budgeted in the presentations. I think it was somewhere around, we thought we were going to be around 54-something million. And we started out the year at 47,650,000. After these transactions, payments of bonds in December, a couple of these are refunding, so we're going to pay it out and then refinance it at a lower rate. We're going to end up with about 50,600,000. So, we are still within what we projected for the budget.
Given what size payment in December?
Three million, about a little bit over three million of principal payments in December.
So, it's a million dollar savings?
Okay. So, we're still very comfortable, and I think Phil mentioned some of the ratios and things. I think this is nothing to be too concerned about. I think it's a lot of money. We're talking up to $9 million, but we got to keep the streets improved. We got to have a new building, and most of the council agreed that some of the swimming pools were badly in need of renovation. So, I think we did what you wanted, and we're getting the most out of our cash.
And just by way of clarification, we're replenishing the general fund. We didn't dip into emergency reserves.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I would just have a quick, a couple of quick closing comments. One, I said earlier, not only in terms of not investing that money at next to nothing on your reserves and so forth, you save the transaction cost, which is material. Instead of having two trips to the market in terms of underwriting and transaction cost, you just have the one for this transaction, which I think is important. Mr. Shannon would be interested to note that the ordinance with the most complexity is about a three-page ordinance, it's very short, but the underlying documents are massive. And Rich and I and Mike had drafted them, but we both reviewed them very carefully, so I'm very comfortable with the process and it works very effectively. We use it frequently throughout the state in a lot of transactions. It's very, very acceptable and very well done. Thank you.
We're still open for a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this item, please do so. Mr. Severson, were you going to...no? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, which is the council. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number 3892.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one.
Thank you. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance.
Item A is public hearing on the request of the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Salvation Army and Marathon Ventures for a fireworks display at 901 Fort Crook Road North on November 17, 2017, at approximately 6:45 p.m. in conjunction with the Salvation Army Big Red Kettle 2017 Community Kickoff Celebration.
Please do.
Jim Risto with Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation. Mayor, councilman, any questions?
I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. If anyone from the public has any questions, please do so at this time. I see none. Mr. Modri.
Thank you. I move that we approve the request of the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Salvation Army and Marathon Ventures for a fireworks display at 901 Fort Crook Road North on November 17, at approximately 6:45 p.m. in conjunction with the Salvation Army Big Red Kettle 2017 Community Kickoff Celebration.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Hope to see you all out there.
Thank you. It's a wonderful event, so those that haven't been or have, please, it's a wonderful event. Thank you.
Item B is public hearing on the approval of the final plat of lots 1 through 81 and outlots A through H. Belalago. Applicant is Boyer Young Development. General location 45th Street and Cape Hart Road. Subitem 1 is then the approval of the Belalago subdivision agreement.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent Beller, on behalf of the project applicant, Boyer Young Development Company. The final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat that was submitted and approved. So, with that, here for any questions, and we appreciate the council's consideration.
Any questions from the council? See none. I'll go ahead and open for a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that has any questions, comments? See none, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of Count...Mr. Hanson?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the Belalago subdivision agreement.
Second.
Final plat, I'm sorry.
Final plat.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Is that a motion? Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
And make a motion that we approve the subdivision agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven, the resolutions?
Item A is resolution number 2017-23, approving the extension of the water franchise agreement with Metropolitan Utilities District for 25 years.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve resolution number 2017-23.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion. Mr. Shannon?
Since we're signing an agreement with MUD, it would seem an opportune time to leverage the situation for a discussion on our billing fees on the sewers and the wastewater and all this other stuff, where we're getting raped for 10% billing fees, and it's costing us half a million a month, I think it is? So, is that an opportunity we could take advantage of? They want us to sign an agreement for 25 years. Can we get some, you know, discussion going about, you know, at least attempt to lower the billing fees?
As was explained in the cover memo on this item, we did do that. We did exactly that. We met with them on several occasions, and we understand the nature of their process for billing. We understand the intricacies of that, and as we move forward, we are going to be asking them for additional services as we implement the solid waste collection and the different container size that citizens will have. So, we did examine the rates. We did seek to get those rates lowered, but we understand that why they cannot be, and that's why the recommendation is that we move forward with the franchise agreement.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12, current business.
Item A is authorization to participate in Smart Cities Lab with a fee of $2,500 to be taken from community betterment funds.
Mr. Burns?
I make a motion that we authorize to participate, that sounds weird, in the Smart Cities Lab with a fee of $2,500 to be taken from community betterment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Thank you.
Item B is approval of the administration's recommendation to terminate the agreement with Socrata for a full open data portal.
Mr. Burns?
I make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendation to terminate the agreement with Socrata for a full open data portal.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item C is approving the purchase of one 2018 Ford F-150 for the fire department through the State of Nebraska contract for $30,475 plus approximately $2,900 to outfit the vehicle for service totaling $33,375.
I'll move to approve for discussion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion.
I don't understand why we're buying a brand-new support vehicle again. I thought we agreed that support vehicles were going to be passed out and that we would buy a primary vehicle for other purposes and that the support vehicles that are used and passed around are going to be used vehicles. So, I'm confused on this one.
That's accurate, but this isn't a suppression vehicle. This is for specifically communications. We don't do anything...there's no synchronization there. The other ones had to do with being able to buy vehicles that could go in and out, and then all of them could tow some of our equipment, and we had to have those available for suppression. This is completely different. It's cheaper, so...
Okay. In the packet, it said that it's used by everybody, so I assume this is a support vehicle?
You know, within its capabilities, it can be used, but it's not what we would purchase on the suppression side in what we described before as far as utilizing vehicles in different areas for different emergencies.
Thank you for clarification.
Are there any other questions? See none, please vote. He made the motion. He made the motion in a second, so we have discussion.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item D is approving the purchase of radios in the ongoing upgrade process for the fire department from Motorola for a capital expenditure of $286,984.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of radios for $286,984.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item E is approving the purchase of radios on the ongoing upgrade process for the police department from Motorola for a capital expenditure of $199,947.42.
Mayor, I would move to approve item 12E.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions?
All we have to say is the item number.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item F, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the mini grant award from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice for up to $31,986.43 to purchase and install five computer tablets and equipment for vehicles in order to implement an e-citations program.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the mini grant for $31,986.43.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Questions, discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item G is approving the purchase of furniture from All Makes for 1,500 Wall Street, not to exceed $110,000, and waive city council policy for purchasing requirements.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to waive the council policy for purchasing requirements and to approve the purchase of the furniture from All Makes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item H, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement with Sarpy County and approve the proposal and agreement for professional services from Helsberg...excuse me, Felsberg, Holt, and Ulyg in an amount not to exceed $118,000 to complete a feasibility study on the section of 36th Street from Highway 370 to Cornhusker Road.
I'd move to approve item twelve H.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister, question, Mr. Modri?
Yes, the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in our package with the proposal RFP response, it's one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, which our half would be fifty-nine four hundred. So, take that amendment.
And I'll second that amendment.
Mr. Roberts, just double checking. You're good. Thank you. Is that in the motion? Thank you. And we have second by Mr. Shannon, discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All yes.
And now on? The actual motion? Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item I is approving the purchase of three single-axle dump trucks and associated hydraulic snowplow, dump body, and GPS equipment for the street department, per the current city of Omaha pricing, extended to Bellevue by Cornhusker International, in an amount of five hundred one thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, one hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars each.
I would move to approve item twelve Y.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister, questions or discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Mr. Shannon?
Okay, maybe it's the fact that we had a packet that was four hundred and seventy-some pages long this meeting, so by the time you get down to the end, something like this, you get a little punchy reading through all this stuff. So, it was with extreme curiosity that I read that we intend to purchase single-axle dump trucks. That's a teeter totter. I am assuming that we're going to purchase single rear axle dump trucks, and that it was just labeled incorrectly, but I was amused at page four hundred and seventy-three with the idea and the physics of single-axle dump trucks. It was cute.
Mr. Roberts?
Is my, is my assumption correct, sir?
No, they're called single axles or double axle, depending on if there's two wheels or four wheels that drives it.
So, there's a front axle, it's, it's two axles.
You always assume the front axle, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, administration report, comments must be limited to the items on the current report, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Manjimelli? Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I do want to point out in the Nebraska Municipal Review that we just got, Bellevue is featured in it, and it highlights that the Bellevue Public Works Department received the Metro Area Planning Association Regional Service Award, and that award was given not lightly, it was given because our Parks Department, our Streets Department, all of our Public Works employees were out after the June tornado, cleaning up the community. It was a tremendous job, a tremendous effort, a huge cost to the city, unplanned, unbudgeted, you can't budget or plan for tornadoes or floods or those kinds of challenges. But our staff did plan, on the spot essentially, to deal with it and to do the best they could with long hours, oftentimes working well into the night to help those people. So, I just, I'm glad this article was written, I'm glad MAPPA recognized the good service of our good employees, and that the Nebraska Municipal Review saw a fit, that it was valuable enough to publish it for all of us. So, my thanks and comments to the city administrator, the mayor, for organizing and being onsite, and to Jeff Roberts and Public Works and all of his staff for the exceptional job they did for our community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to add to that real quick, Jeff, for your Public Works Department, the Two Springs, the outlots that had heavy damage to their trees and stuff, we had a lot of people send a lot of emails about that situation, and I just want to thank you and your, the workers underneath you for all the hard work. I've gone down there several times, and I am amazed at the work that has been done down there. I think we're probably going to get done a lot quicker than what we had expected, but please to pass on to the workers, that the work they've done down there is unbelievable. Even though the park, even though the area, I mean, we lost a lot of trees, most of the trees, it's sad to see that and the undergrowth, but it had to be cleaned up, we brought a lot of experts there. I think what I was last told was the Tree Board has been involved, the Nebraska Forest Service, the National Forest Service, and others have assisted us with their expertise, and I think the job down there has been outstanding, and our employees have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, I wanted to add my congratulations, too, I had the opportunity to attend the dinner, it was, it was quite an affair, a lot of, a lot of dignitaries, a lot of cities represented there, and a great award for Bellevue. Mr. Roberts, while I've got you, a quick question, on Champions Village, are we going to start seeing some, some updates on the progress being made there, sir?
Yeah, we have some information that we can share whenever we get a meeting scheduled to decide on which direction we're going to move with it.
Okay, I, I guess what I was asking is, I'm looking to start seeing some things on your reports, so as we're getting media inquiries and things, we can tell people progress is being made, Champions Village is being cleaned up, those kinds of things?
Yeah, we've been receiving proposals from different people, so we'll share that soon.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the administration report? See none, we'll move on to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official, employer, or member of the general public, and City Code, Section two dash six eight, regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers, speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes, please. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening. One thing I do want to compliment the Parks Department, because in the Jewel Park down there, there was, in the small dog park, there was a table that had a broken top, one of the boards was broken and rotten, and dogs jump up there and they could have broken their leg, and so I called them and they responded, and they got the board put in, so they do an excellent job with the, with the Parks Department for the dog park there. You know, I've suggested numerous times about having another dog park in southwest Bellevue, and now that you're talking about committees and how they are operated and how they are selected and now disbanded, I suggest that maybe you might want to have a committee to get going on having another dog park in southwest, southwest Bellevue, and I think I qualify to be on that committee. I mean, my dog Fred was my campaign manager when I, when I ran for city council and won, and if it wasn't for one of the council people that's not here, if it wasn't for that damn dog, he wouldn't have won, so I think I know dogs pretty well, and dogs know me. The other thing is that I want to congratulate Pat Shannon for, Mr. Shannon, for getting through with this recall thing, that was, it was, it was certainly a waste of time and my tax dollars, because all it did was take up Mr. Shannon's time so that he couldn't do even a better job than he's doing already in the city council. So, and one person who was in the recall committee, a recall committee was saying that it was well worth it, because it was, he was an embarrassment to the city. I don't see that at all, I don't see him as an embarrassment, I see him just the opposite, he's trying to do the best job he can to make the city a better city. The embarrassment is, and that we just talked about, with the World Baseball Field, where all that money that the parents paid for their, for their kids, they don't have it yet, that's the embarrassment, that money should be paid back by the people who got that money. That's, it's, 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 just, that's the embarrassment. The other thing, too, is that both the Bellevue Leader and World Herald wrote about, and with misinformation about Mr. Shannon and the money that he, that he, that was paid to the, to the disability, not disability, but disclosure and accountability committee, and I know that Mr. Shannon sent them, called them ahead of time, and sent, and told them where the twenty thousand dollars was, he put in twenty thousand dollars, and the way the articles sound, like they found the money, well, they didn't find the money, he called them and told them where the money was. So, I, I think that's kind of misleading as to the public as to what happened in that situation. Now it's off the table, and he can now hopefully do a good job in the council, and I think he'll be, make a good mayor also. The other thing, too, is that when I do talk here, and I have talked many times, it's not reported in the Bellevue Leader, the World Herald, and I've talked about a lot of things, I won't repeat any of them now, right now, but I do believe that I'm entitled to have my website in the minutes, chuckfrederick.com, it used to be in there before, was no problem, I don't see any reason why not that it can't be in there now. So, I, I prefer, I like the asking to make sure that my website, chuckfrederick.com, is in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Are there others? See none, we'll go on to item number fifteen, into closed session.
I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interests. The subject matter to be, to be discussed in closed session shall be city-owned property on South Thirty-Sixth Street, north of Cape Hart. The following individuals will be included in closed session, Joe Manjimelli, Rich Severson, Jeff Roberts, and Chris Schuchuck.
Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson, discussion or questions?
You might want to add myself and Tim Buckley.
I also add, I also add Pat Sullivan and Tim Buckley.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second, discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, the city council has voted to go into closed session at this time, the subject matter will be discussed, closed session will be city-owned property on South Thirty-Sixth Street, north of Cape Hart, including Joe Manjimelli, Rich Severson, Jeff Roberts, Chris Schuchuck, Pat, Pat Sullivan, and Tim Buckley.